Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Unanimous? Little bit of a feedback, but, okay. We have any conflict of interest? From the commission? No? Correspondence?
I do have some correspondence for each public hearing and I'll announce that the public hearing.
Okay. Um, do we have any council members or... Oh, we have Zach Lopez and, uh, or Longacre, I'm sorry, Zach. I apologize. And Ellen Campbell, thanks for coming. Okay, as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set in the silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the commissioners on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When addressing the commissioners, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendments to California to government code section five four nine five zero prohibit the commission from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. We have any public comments? No? Okay, we'll move on to the public hearings. This is continued from our April sixth, uh, twenty twenty-two meeting, a public hearing to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an application from James Bala for a special use permit to allow for a two thousand one hundred and fifty square foot Pacific clinics clubhouse located at nine two three Front Street, Needles, California, in the city of Needles, California, in the C two general commercial zone, also known as APN zero one eight six dash one zero two dash zero four dash zero zero zero. Zero. Staff report.
Yes, Honorable Chair, in front of you, you have resolution...
Just, just a moment, Patrick, until we get up here.
Okay, I just wanted to announce, Patrick, just in case you didn't receive it, a copy of... We did get an email from Elena Teas in favor of, um, the project.
Okay, you can continue, Patrick.
Okay, great. Um, Planning Commission, in front of you, we have resolution five eleven dash two zero two two P C. As you recall, on April sixth, the Planning Commission, uh, held a duly notice and advertised public hearing for a special use permit for a twenty-one hundred and fifty square foot Pacific clinics clubhouse located at nine two three Front Street. At that meeting, public written, public and written testimony was taken from multiple members of the public with overwhelming opposition to the Pacific clinics. Uh, we were directed by the Planning Commission to come back with a resolution denying the approval of this special use permit. So in front of you today, you have, uh, a resolution that has found in its findings that the co- uh, the application is incomplete due to the contradictory and continuously changing information that was proposed, uh, during this presentation of the project and in the application. So because the, uh, Planning Commission was not given, uh, full information and the incomplete, uh, application is incomplete, we are unable to have the sufficient information available provided in this application for you to make, uh, determination on the Pacific clinics. So today, in front of you, we have that resolution, uh, that is denying the special use permit for the twenty-one hundred and fifty square foot Pacific clinics clubhouse located at nine two three Front Street, uh, City of Needles. I am now prepared for any questions that you might have.
Okay, commissioners, have any questions for staff? Barbara?
Yes, um, assuming we are, this is just a clarification of the grounds for denial, we already voted on it. But I am wondering if on section two, it's on the second page of the resolution, section one, excuse me, finding and determining this project is categorically exempt from CEQA, can we even make that finding as long as we are not making any other findings?
That, that is, uh, considering that it's an existing building at the site, it would be exempt from CEQA if they were to put a, uh, the proposed project at the site. So we could, uh, we could remain with that finding as a, uh, the exemption in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd like to open, uh, continue the public hearing, uh, which would be continued from the last meeting and, uh, or a public comment, and the discussion should be limited to the findings only because we've already had an open discussion from the previous meeting, and this is a continued meeting. So do we have any, uh, public comments or... If none, um, I'll close the public, oh, I'm sorry. Come forward and state your name and address.
Gerald Teas, seventeen oh nine Coronado Street, Needles. You guys are gonna have to stop me if I, um, am not consistent with what, where we're at with this thing now. I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I've always been a proponent of all development in Needles and anything that will, will bring population, bring tax revenue, bring, bring, um, something to Needles. I've represented a number of people over the years that have retail, uh, offices, retail suites in Needles. And, uh, you know, one of the things that's lagged in Needles is, uh, the ability for these people to rent these suites to, uh, customers or whatever. As a consequence, uh, they haven't been able to raise their rents or, uh, sell their buildings because, uh, every investor will, will look at the, um, you know, gross rent multiplier formula to put a value on the building. And if you have low rents, um, you can't justify a higher sale price. So we got a little problem here with, um, uh, retail and commercial rents. Uh, I'll give you a couple of examples. We have fourteen oh six Bailey up here that's owned by the Richardson family, or James Richardson's the trustee, and he'll have a vacant suite from time to time. The rents are relatively low, uh, compared to everyone else in California. And, um, you know, he has trouble, um, filling vacancies. Same thing with, um, uh, Mr. Browder down there, I think it's eight hundred West Broadway. He's had some problems over the years of filling suites and getting his rents up. Eight fifty-seven Front Street, uh, Stafford's Corner, the old drugstore, same thing there, vacant suites, low rents. So I just want, um, the folks on this panel to consider that, um, we're sort of, in a, in a way, doing a disservice to some of the business owners by denying anything. The little bit I know about this, uh, this, um, company is that, uh, they're very, very solid, their, their, uh, exclusive client, I guess, is the state of California, who has deep pockets and ability to pay. So, uh, I'm not sure where all the opposition comes from to having such a center here. I mean, after all, we do have a, a little bit of a homeless problem like every community in, in the world, in, in the United States. And, uh, you know, because, because we're, we're missing an opportunity to fill a couple of, uh, retail suites and we're basically sweeping under the rug, the problem we have with homelessness. I, I was sort of disappointed that you guys had all opted to, uh, shoot this project down. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And I'd like to, uh, close the public comment and hearing. Any other questions from the commissioner or discussion? If not, um, I'd like to move to approving the findings of facts and ask for a motion to move on with the denial.
I'll move to, uh, adopt this revolution which denies the special use permit application to allow for a twenty-one fifty square foot Pacific clinics clubhouse located at nine twenty-three Front Street in the city of Needles, California, in the C two general commercial zone, also known as APN zero one eight six dash one zero two dash zero four dash zero 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 on the ground stated in the one, two, three, four-page findings.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Okay, moving on to number two, public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an application from MSB Facilities representative for MSBLC for amending resolution number zero one dash eighteen dash two zero one seven dash two P C and recommending to city council approval of an amendment to conditional use permit zero one dash eighteen dash two zero one seven dash two P C, adding a second twenty thousand square foot building for cannabis cultivation facility in the C one neighborhood commercial zone located at one one zero five Lily Hill Drive, also known as APN zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five seven dash zero 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 and zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five zero 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 zero, formerly known as APNs zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five zero dash zero 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 and zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five three zero 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 zero. Staff report, did we lose Patrick or is...
No, you're here, hello? Okay.
Patrick, hi, this is Dale, I just wanted to make sure, I don't know if you received a copy of the, uh, email, but we got a request from our commissioner today regarding, uh, a list of any citations at that particular location, and there were four.
Perfect, and those are shared with the planning commissioners, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, so in front of you, we have...
Just a minute, just a minute, Patrick, you have a question?
Yeah, was one of those open still or the, like...
I believe so.
I think there was the last one still open.
Thank you.
Okay, Patrick, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem, in front of you, we have resolution number zero five eleven dash two zero two two dash one P C regarding eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive, building two.
Aye, we can't hear you, Patrick.
All right, so resolution number zero five eleven two zero two two dash one amends the existing C U P to add a twenty thousand square foot second building for cannabis cultivation at the previously stated address in APNs eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive. So here's the vicinity map, as you can see up on the screen. The property is located, uh, next to, uh, a gen- uh, building that is existing here at the site. It's in, uh, located, uh, just south of the freeway, uh, north of a residential, uh, multi-family development. You've got to the west and east are public facilities along with the Elks, it's a flood control zones. And so, and to the north, and it is an existing cannabis facility building that is at the site. The project is zone neighborhood commercial, and as you can see from the site, there's to the north thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot cannabis cultivation and the forty. To the south is residential apartments, to the east is the Elks Lodge and flood control, to the west is can- flood control land in the interstate forty. Next line. All right, here's the existing site, there's two parcels, as we talked about in the staff report. They will be, there's an agreement to tie them together, but the green outlined area is going to be the project site and the existing project that is on the C U P, the existing C U P is just north of the green, as you can see with that building right there. So the applicant is applied to amend the existing conditional use permit to add the twenty thousand square foot for the, but building cultivation facility to the existing thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-five cannabis cultivation development. The project is situated on undeveloped six point six four acre portion of a twenty-one point five three acre parcel located at Lily Hill Drive. As previously stated, it's a neighborhood commercial zoning designation which permits for the use of cannabis cultivation. The project will operate seven days a week from six A M. to six P M., will employ fifty full-time employees and will have fifty-two parking stalls, five ADA and four E V. parking. Looking at the existing site, uh, to the north, here's the overall site plan. I wanted to show you the whole site, how it plays into effect. So the existing buildings to the north, and then right there in the middle is gonna be the new site plan. And here it is right there, as you can see, it's located on that parcel that was the green area on the front of the other, uh, existing cultivation. And so the entrance to the facility will be here off the west side. As you come in, there will be a gate and, um, a wall to, uh, have an entrance. And then you come in to the facility, and then the back side is actually facing the Lily Hill side. As you come in, the parking is located, if you're looking at this photo, to the east of the building, all the parking for the current, um, building and the new building will be located along the east side of the project. So looking at the floor plan, you can see here in front of you that there's gonna be, uh, the building will consist of interior wall partitions for the creation of ten cultivation flowering rooms, each totaling thirteen hundred square feet, a warehouse storage room, uh, for, uh, for, for, for vegetation rooms, dry rooms, electrical rooms, offices, bathrooms, locker room, security entry room. The entrance, as you can see, is down here at the southeast corner. As you come on the parking lot, you're gonna enter into the security entry area, and then you'll be able to maneuver throughout the building, uh, through that security entry area on the southeast side of the building. Here's the exterior elevations. As you can see, uh, they, they mirror the buildings that are already up over there on Victory. Uh, you can see that there's the, um, the architectural enhancement on the building that separates, uh, splits the building and creates a, um, enhancement. And so here's the west elevation and the east elevation. And then again, you're gonna see that same architectural enhancement on the south side and the north side. So here is the landscaping plan that they presented. As you can see, there's a significant amount of shade being provided from various, um, uh, opportunities here. So there's gonna be tree shadings, there's gonna be, um, the ground cover shadings, but a total, um, total shading area with thirty-seven new valley oak trees being planted and twenty new landscape shrubs totaling nineteen thousand four hundred and ten square feet of shading being provided in their landscaping plan. And as you can see, it's gonna, it'll be on the, uh, west side, it'll be surrounding the whole project, which, uh, but the, um, Lily Hill side or D Street Bridge side is gonna be on the west side of this building, as you can see where all those palm trees are being planted. So the project rendering, we're gonna just go through, uh, as you can see, there's A, B, uh, E, D, C on this. And so we're just gonna go through a couple of the different snapshots of what the, well, pr- will provided on the plans of what you're gonna be seeing. So this is the site A, as you come in, you'll be looking at the building A and B, so as you come in, you'll be seeing it. Um, C is from the parking lot side. D is again from the angle of the parking lot side. E is another, uh, image of the parking lot side, so you can see that there's the architectural enhancement with the landscape being incorporated into the building. And then here's a rendering of what the site's gonna look like coming off of Lily Hill or the, the D Street, uh, Bridge side. As you can see with the wall and the trees and the shrubs, um, and the driveway, uh, of the building. So again, here's just, uh, uh, different viewpoints of the project, the site photos, again, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H. And so here's just what you're looking at from the project side. And this is just the surrounding areas, the entrance as you come in. And then here's the side, the freeway side off the I forty. And then here's off the backside. And so here's just some site photos, this is what, this was taken last week, so you can see that the, uh, building will be situated on that front parcel right there. And then here's the whole frontage of that building with the existing and the, uh, new building site. And then here's just the driveway coming in, showing the entire site. So there, there have been added conditions, so, uh, the insulation of a six-foot block wrought iron fence accessible mangate entrance, the existing six-foot, uh, chain link fence will remain at the site, which is on the backside of it. Prior to issuance of a permanent certificate, certificate of occupancy for the twenty thousand square foot building, the applicant will achieve odor control of the existing thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot cannabis cultivation building to achieve the odor control. And in the conditions of approval, the indoor cultivation shall not adversely affect the health or safety of nearby residents and businesses. And so that means that the odors, uh, dust, glare, heat, noise, smoke, traffic, all those things must be mitigated and all facilities, all facilities shall incorporate, operate, maintain sufficient odor absorbing ventilation through the use of a closed-loop charcoal line filtration exhaust systems. And so those are conditions that have been put into this, uh, project. And so here, as you know, with every conditional use permit, you have to make the findings. And so we're gonna go through these findings. So finding number three, so it is a complete application. We know that it is, uh, within the permissible uses. And then finding number three, the, the, the development is in general conformity with the Needles general plan. So the facility is located in the neighborhood commercial zoning designation, which under our ordinance six twenty-nine does permit the cannabis cultivation operations to occur on the site. Uh, finding number four, that the development is in harmony with the area in which it's located. So because we are amending the C U P, the project site is directly south of an existing three thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot cannabis cultivation, which will be located on that undeveloped six point six four lot. The project site will include that twenty thousand square foot cannabis cultivation. So the conditions of approval will require that the cultivation be, um, performed inside the building. No manufacturing will occur at the site, very little traffic is expected at the site with other employees, um, delivering the shipment. The project upon completion is anticipated to have fifty vehicle trips per day, therefore, this project is consistent with the uses in the vicinity. Finding number five, that the development will not materially endanger the public health or safety. So the facility is located in an undeveloped area of the city, um, in terms of that parcel itself. But to the north, you've got that development that exists. So the conditions of approval have been placed on this project to ensure that lighting, security systems, ventilation systems for that twenty thousand square foot building are in place for health and safety purposes. And then finding number six, that the development will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. The area to the north is zoned to family residential, the area to the south, both parcels are highway, commercial and family residential. The area to the east is zoned, multi-family residential, and the public facilities, which include the flood control. As a condition of approval, the proposed twenty thousand square foot building will be painted earth-toned colors to the building to match the general color of the surrounding soils and topography. These improvements will provide aesthetic integrity of the area and not degrade value of the adjoining properties. All facilities shall operate, maintain sufficient odor absorbing ventilation exhaust systems. So in front of you, our recommended action is to approve resolution zero five eleven twenty-two two zero two two dash one recommending city council approval of an amendment of conditional use permit zero one eighteen two thousand seventeen dash two P C adding the twenty thousand square foot second building for a cannabis cultivation located at eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive, also known as APN zero one eight six one nine one dash five seven zero 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 and zero one eight six one nine one fifty zero 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 in the neighborhood commercial zone. I now, the pre- the applicant is also there, uh, currently, they would like to have a presentation, uh, of the, their own. And so I'm gonna stop presenting, and you're gonna be seeing me again, and I can, uh, the applicant is there to provide their presentation.
Okay.
But I am also open for any questions that you might have, after they provide their presentation.
Okay, we'll have the applicant presentation, and then they'll have some questions, uh, probably for you, Patrick, thank you.
Thank you, I'm here.
Okay, would you like to, uh, give us your name and address, please?
Uh, my name's Lonnie Garcia, my address is nine three two Earl Court, Needles.
You can pull that microphone down for you a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's your first name?
Lonnie.
Lon.
L A N I. I am going to share my screen. Okay, well, thank you for hearing us out. Before we get to the project, we wanted to talk about who we are. Um, and here today, my name's Lonnie, I work on the construction side of, with our company. Um, we have Dawn Williams here, she's our resident general manager, and then our senior VP of cultivation, Sean. And here's a little bit about who we are. Oh, hold on, I can have volume. Great, hold on, sorry.
It's okay.
Hold on, this is Echo. It's... One second. See if that fixed it. Oh geez, sorry.
Geez, sorry.
Can you take the volume up?
Did you, are you wanting to just play through the video? Is, don't...
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you see the screen? That's the volume down.
Yeah, I just, yes, I can hear you. I did turn the volume up. Yeah, I got it in eighty.
Maybe you could turn off her microphone there. Okay.
Um, Patrick, you have our other video, right?
Yes.
Okay. I, what I'll do is go through the presentation, and when we get to the main video, we can go ahead and bypass this, if you could play it on your side.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, um, California is the largest cannabis market. We control our supply chain from cultivation to retail, which enables us to deliver safe and tested cannabis products at affordable prices. Our product is sold all over the state with twenty stores open now and another fifteen expected to open this year. Uh, we also operate in Nevada, Michigan and Arizona. Among the public companies, we are named...
Lonnie?
Yes.
Can you repeat how many you said, because there was talking going on over here, how many you have, go back to that prior sentence?
Yeah, for sure.
I didn't hear the first part of it.
No worries, okay, so our product is sold all over the state. Um, we have twenty stores open now with fifteen in the works to open before the end of the year. Yep, um, we also operate in Nevada, Michigan and Arizona. We are ranked number three in the nation compared to public companies, but we are the number one privately owned, uh, cannabis company. Um, as you can see, here are some of our taxes paid to the state of California. To date, Needles has been, uh, given four hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars with our first building that Patrick mentioned. Um, we project to be somewhere in two point four million, uh, quarterly, uh, with an annual nine point six million dollars in taxes. I, sorry, I wanted to also mention that since it, since its inception, uh, we have contributed the most money in tax dollars compared to any of the operators in the city. Um, so this project is going to create at least... Um, so this project is going to create at least 30 to 40 more jobs in your community. Um, with these salaries and benefits, uh, we would like to offer the community a place to have a career here, right here in their hometown. We are not bringing the city to this desert. We intend to hire local. Our company is not only providing a great place to make a career, we also actively participate in events to help others in the community as well. Um, so now that, um, we've introduced ourselves, we wanted to talk about the, about our project, but Patrick went very extensively through it, so I'll kind of breeze through this really quickly. Um, we have our existing building right now with 35 job positions. Um, currently, we are in construction, um, for four buildings on Victory and Broadway. Um, we are also hired local contractors, Colorado River Plumbing, Robinson's Electric, AR Creations, and Phillips Excavation. Uh, this would be just a reiteration of what Patrick said and where we're located, so I'm going to go ahead and get through this. All right. Uh, we are leaders in our industry because as a company, we have set a core values to provide the best product. Our company spends time and money into research and development. Our facilities are designed with state-of-the-art equipment that is good for the product, good for business, and good for the community. Um, we have dedicated time and money to this community, to this community, and we don't have any intentions of stopping. Um, you could see on the screen what we've done and what we intend to do, including donated $7,500 for Christmas gifts for all the kids last year for Christmas. Uh, for odor mitigation. Um, we are addressing the issue and we take it very seriously. Um, we have developed a proprietary system that is being used in our other facilities. So this is a three-part closed-loop system, um, which basically takes the air that's the odor, um, that's within the facility and takes it through a three-part filtration system. It first runs through UV light, which, uh, sanitizes by destroying pathogens. Then it runs through a second filtration system, um, known as a carbon filter, which is used to neutralize the smell. And then the third filter is rated MIR 14, which is basically rated to kill tobacco smoke smell. Other things that we are doing for the city of Needles is we are helping to bring power by providing land for a new substation. Uh, water conservation is hugely important to us and the environment. Uh, so we are also making moves to help conserve water in our desert community. Um, Patrick, would you be able to show our video now, please?
Sure.
Um, this video, do I need to take off? Okay.
What, uh, where do you want me to start? From the beginning?
Yes, please.
Okay. Second one.
Just to give you a little background on this video, um, a leading educational marketing company reached out, um, because of the impact Steezy has on the industry and are environmentally conscious and are bringing methods that, uh, for sustainability.
Hold on. One second. Okay.
Sean, are you getting sound on your end? Cause we're not getting sound here.
I have the on the line and he's going to share it from our end because we.
There's no, no sound? You guys can't hear that?
Correct. I guess Dan is on the line with Candace, so he's going to share something from his side. So we'll, cause he has sound.
I stopped sharing my screen, so.
Okay, thank you.
He can take over.
Okay, we've got it. Thank you.
Can you guys? It's David. It's David.
So thank you very much. In closing, we are not your average operator. We are leading the pack and raising the bar on a national level. Um, we take care of our team, our community, and the environment. So we are here today to ask for your approval for our second building at 1105 Lily Hill Drive. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Okay, Patrick, you're back on. I'll open up to questions from the commission to staff or the applicant. Okay, Bob, go ahead.
Couple of things. And wanting me to claim that, I guess, the tax contributions there, particular businesses, number one in Needles, is that true? Anyone know that that claim is true?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
They've only been in operation for six months. Their monthly revenue is amongst the highest. I will add that in their ranking within appropriate time.
Okay. Now, it appears we've got several odor control citations. The evidently facility is having a very tough time with odor control. But you claim that you've got the state-of-the-art equipment, and you've got an odor control system that you're touting, and it doesn't seem to be working correctly. So I'm having a very hard time understanding how you can make claims regarding your odor control. And yet, we've got odor control complaints from the facility, and including one that's currently open.
I could, I'll take that.
Okay, would you list your name and address, please?
Yes, Sean Oganessian. My address is 12721 Hamlin Street, North Hollywood, California, 91606. So we inherited the problem at Lily Hill. We took, we bought the building, was an existing building with pre-approved plans, and was already approved, and it was already termed key operation. When we took over the project, we looked into, we did a whole upgrade on top of what we paid for for the property. We spent about the same amount of money to rebuild the whole project. It was all done incorrectly, so we built everything out. We have our internal smell contained, and we do take care of our mitigation internally. The outside AC units that were approved by the city prior to us buying the building, and prior to us even, we didn't install this, we didn't install those ACs either. Those are package units. So a package unit is not a split system. Our proprietary has, is a split system, so it's a closed-loop system. And it's the fan that is blowing, it's actually internally, and it's throwing the same air inside. These are package units. So you have your condenser and your blower, your flam, fan blower, right there, right next to it, and it's sitting right outside the building. And the mixing box, it's, the plana mix that's sitting on, it's also sitting, that box is right outside. So when that air is pulling in and pressurizing that unit, it's escaping from the outside. And what I did commit to, and I tried to commit to this earlier to the state, to fix this problem, the problem was Alberto stopped my project, saying, "I can't let you do this. If you do this, I'm going to stop this process of it." So I said, "Okay, if you already approved this, then I'm just going to let this go. And then when it's ready for me to be able to move on and replace this, when I can have time to remove my money."
Well, I'm also having trouble understanding everything he's saying over your voice. You're talking almost.
For us to recoup the amount of money that we already invested into the project. So we stayed with what it is, what was existing. As we get Victory up, so where I could sustain my ROIs, I could sustain my cash flow. Once I get all my construction already being built up over here, then I could start shutting down my facility that's generating every quarter. When I say every quarter, this is our first quarter payment, which is already $435,000 to City of Needles on taxes. So pound to pound, yes, we are number one paying taxpayer in City of Needles when it comes to selling compared to all the other operators. Because we don't do any funny business, we run a proper business, and we claim, where we buy our product, we pay ourselves. We don't tell ourselves we're buying the product at the lowest amount of money. We're actually buying it at market value, and we're paying the taxes on market value to the city because we are city players. We do play with you guys. And I do want to understand that it is very concerning to me because that also is also costly for me because I'm losing a lot more air coming out of my rooms. So it's costing me on my cost as well, on my, on my production site. So that's the reason why we are not, we are not, haven't been able to fully attack our mitig, our air mitigation, our odor mitigation. But internally, we have our odor mitigation completely in sealed form. And I could welcome all of you guys to the facility, and you guys could take a walk, and you guys could actually see yourselves as well.
Are you feeling, Bob still talking?
Yeah, so, so what you're saying, or I think I'm hearing you say is, so the citations that, because some of them is just as recent. And what you're saying is, is the units that are producing the odor, basically the air conditioning system, HVAC system, not your, not your venting system. And you're having trouble getting the proper permitting or what have your, whatever, to then put in the system.
I just don't want to spend another $3 million to replace ACs, brand-new ACs that I already paid $1.8 million for to buy it.
Say that again, sorry.
I need to spend $3.2 million to replace those ACs with the new ACs.
Okay, but you're having trouble, what's your, what's your problem right now in going through with that?
I can't stop a project that's operating right now and generating cash for me to continue to build the other projects.
So are you telling us that if we deny this project, you can't take care of that mitigation that you're talking about?
This project has nothing to do with us taking care of the problem. The problem is being taken care of. The system is being ordered. It is about 24 months out on the GPOD units. Because GPODs are all internal, it creates its own humidity, it creates its own CO2. So it helps me with a lot of stuff. It's 24 months out, sir. So, yes, we are addressing it, but the units that I need to buy, it's 24 months out, and it's already in order.
Sorry, what?
It's already ordered.
The, the, the new air conditioning units?
The new air conditioning units that I'm going to replace this with, yes. They're already on order.
But they're 24 months out.
They're 24 months out. A regular five ton is 18 weeks out.
Rick, did you have something?
Yeah, let me, let me add, if I might, from the enforcement view is, the building that was built, although I believe they always had cannabis in mind when they built it, we discovered once they began operations at 1105, that there was odor at the property line, which is the plant beyond the property. And we provided notice, and we provided citations, and you have the citations. We go to the site every time. At the beginning, there were a number of, quite a few complaints. And what we discovered from a building construction standpoint is that the previous owner had used, as Sean explained, an open-loop air conditioning system, which meant that it pulled in air from outside, cooled it, circulated it through the building, and then spit that same air out into the environment.
With filters.
Well, that, that it, it didn't, it wasn't being filtered. So we concluded that that was the cause of the problem. And, for example, in their new buildings elsewhere in the city, they're using a closed-loop system, which means, like in your car, you hit the circular button, and it just keeps recirculating, recooling the same air, and it doesn't get out into the environment. So we determined that that was the cause. We did our research and concluded that there were a number of things they could do. For example, lack of better term, all of deodorants. You can put pine air, air freshener buckets of this stuff, which masks the cannabis oil, the familiar cannabis oil. But, I mean, it comes in orange, and it comes in all kinds of things. That helps a little bit. We found that there were times that they had their large doors, delivery cars, open, and they made a concerted effort to keep those closed but for actual passage of vehicles in and out of the building. And that helped a lot. So what we've seen is the incidence of the odor complaints, and I drive by there four times a day, dramatically drop off.
Since when?
Since they began operating six months ago.
With these bad air conditioners?
They still have the bad.
Well, but they are, it is not, there are days that it is there. I mean, there's, there's no denying. And so what we did is we made sure that was corrected on the new building. The four new buildings are in construction on South 95. And we've made sure that the closed-loop system.
Wasn't even our problem to correct it. You've seen our plans, we don't have those ACs on our plans like that.
So, so then down at, and then on this building, we've made sure that an air conditioning plus, what we've discovered is they have, are using technologies in terms of paneling inside seals up the building better than what was here. So what I understood the applicant say is that as they get this building operational, they will shut down this building for the period of time it takes to retrofit and put in the kind of sealing, SEALiNG, not seal, SE, to permanently seal the building better, but also to use an entirely different kind of air conditioning system. And in our review, that our building officials review the technology, that that.
Okay, so let me, let me ask a question regarding what you're stating here. Because I think I, there's something that you just interjected, which is very important for me to understand this. So they have the four new buildings?
They have four, they have four buildings under construction. One's going to open on South 95.
None are open yet, none are, no producing?
Well, you just said it there. The new system is going to be in the four new buildings. You said it is already.
Yeah, you said it is.
One's going to open in, I'll, I'd like to talk for every time you want to discuss this. One is going to open in June last week. Two are going to open in July on August. And those buildings will have the proper air conditioning, air filtration, and odor suppression technology.
Okay, so what I thought I heard, evidently I didn't hear that. What I'm trying to, trying to understand is, so it sounds to me that they're, they're trying to put in place a different system that's there. But we have no proof as of yet that it's going to keep the odors from happening like they're currently happening. Or am I missing, because I'm, what I was hoping I heard from you was that these four buildings are in, working, and the, the system that they're planning on putting in, in the new buildings and the one that's already there are working great.
Well, what I, what I am prepared to say is, based on research and experience in other cannabis facilities in different parts of the country, that this controls, that the new systems control odors.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Because it wouldn't be leaving the building.
Right, because, because it's just, it's closed loop. So we feel that what they're bringing there is the best technology. Best practices technology.
Hence the wait time, by the way. That's just, it's all made here. It's a big American company, and they make AC units for server rooms, huge server rooms. So they're, they're, they're very pricey too.
Let's run the worst case. Let's say they don't.
They don't want?
They, that, that the new systems, though, the unlikely case, is that we will cite and cite and cite and cite. And then, when it comes to some point, then there would be a declaration of public nuisance. And, but what we've seen is their best faith, good faith effort to control the problem they have today. Problem is they've got a bad box that they're living in. We believe, based on the research and the technologies presented to us and our technical review of that, that that is the best technology available for problems. But we have the ultimate enforcement authority behind that, if it does.
Yeah, I would, I would hate to take the problem that is near these homes and the residential areas and exacerbate that situation by putting the new building even closer with the same, or, you know, the same odoring problems.
Well, but, but what, what he's, what I believe I heard him say, and I'd be correct, is that the closed-loop system that he's putting into the building that's proposed today is dramatically different than he has.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, sir.
I needed to completely understand this.
But those need to be his work. I mean, that's what I understand, and we've had.
I'll show you in the new properties.
I was seeing bruises.
Yes, and I've become convinced that what they're bringing to bear is the best.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We always have that ability.
Okay, Kevin, do you have a question? Sure, just a moment.
Yeah, I have a question because I think what we're talking about is related in Condition 34, which to me doesn't make sense. But if we're also saying, which will require the applicant that prior to the issuance of a permanent certificate of occupancy for building number two, which is the new one with the new system, which should be fine, they will require the applicant to achieve odor control of building one. To me, that statement, "We'll achieve odor control," is kind of ambiguous. I would like to see it stated, what you're saying and what the city is understanding in the conditions. Just, "We'll achieve odor," because we've had problems. It sounds like it's going to be solved. And I'd also like to know, because you're saying that when, when building, my understanding, when building number two is up and running, immediately building number one will be shut down, and these will be installed. I heard that on one of your statements. But then I also heard you say that these units being ordered are two years away. So how long is your?
We have that building up.
Excuse me?
We don't have that building up until, by the time I get that building up.
Okay, so, so that'll be two years to build the one.
Then I start my transition of changing those ACs out.
Okay.
The faster I get those ACs out, trust, it's, it's, it's better for me.
Okay, I would just like to see, to me, that's a very ambiguous condition. Odor control will be achieved. So I'd just like it stated a little better, so.
Okay, let me, let, let, I'm going to, after you're done, maybe you or I can exchange some votes.
We're not done talking.
It sounds like that'll solve the problem.
Okay, that's one, okay, go ahead.
I think the other commissioner kind of hit on what I was looking at too. It's, it seems like the building two will not be issued a occupancy permit until it's established that they've been able to achieve control of the odors at building one. So, yeah, going, how does that sequence work a little bit? I mean, that's.
Having it resolved, yeah.
Seems like that's the leverage we have. If, if, you know, God forbid, they wouldn't be able to achieve control at building one, then that throws a monkey wrench into gears, and everything grinds to a halt.
Or if something should happen to, that building two doesn't exist, they still have to change out one to get it under control. Go ahead. Sure, go ahead.
We, as they go through the plan review, and they build the building, and all the inspections are along the way, at the end of the process, there's the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which is the building official's determination that it is built to the plans, which were checked against building code, and it is structurally sound, it's safe and sound to occupy. And that all pieces of it are in working order. But it also testifies to the fact that all of the other ancillary conditions that might not be related to the building have also been completed. For example, we have allowed, we allowed the spensary at, on Spikes Road to, what we issued was a temporary certificate of occupancy, which allowed them to get their building started while they were finishing up doing some street improvements out in front. Placement of curb and paving. Uh, placement of curb and paving. So it allowed the business, in this case, their case, that business to get started. But within, uh, I think it was about a ninety day period, they had, uh, that done. And then we turned around and issued the full certificate of occupancy. Um, at other, uh, buildings, uh, we have, uh, wanna say Autozone. They were ready to go, but they didn't have all of their landscaping. So we allowed them to start receiving customers, stock their shelves, receive customers. All that landscaping went in. So, and you're right, if you, you, uh, commissioner, you identified exactly. The biggest threat is not issuing certificate of occupancy, which means you have to vacate the building. Don't get rid of it started. So, so that is, and that is the city's declaration that, uh, that all aspects of the building code plus all of these conditions are in compliance. So it's not just structure, it is all the, the ancillary, uh, requirements as well. So we have, uh, on, uh, a project we did that involved the smaller of the two buildings behind Billy B's boat detail. We issue, were prepared to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy. Uh, while they were doing, while there was sell, some, some painting work being done outside. But we don't give the temporary until, or give the final till all boxes check. Including operation of cameras inside and outside the building, odor, like the whole package. Including whatever bonds might have to be posted or financial assurances that might happen.
Any other questions, uh, Will?
Um, well, the other gentleman, the other commissioner hit on it too. Who, you know, who decides what is considered acceptable odor and unacceptable? That is, that is a bit subjective.
Well, the, the, the test is can a reasonable person smell cannabis at the property? So if I go out on the sidewalk in front of this or any of the places and I can smell cannabis, and it doesn't take rocket science to figure out. It's a very distinct odor. That's violation. And code enforcement is authorized to issue those citations if there is odor at property.
Did you have any further questions, Kevin?
No, I'm just, to me, I don't think my question's still, I guess if we're gonna, if we had a temporary certificate of occupancy, that would solve it. But I just don't like the way number thirty-four is written.
We're working on that right now.
Okay.
Okay, Barbara?
I just wanted to answer the question on the timing question that you raised. Um, we could issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, get that building going, number two. But we will not issue full occupancy until building one is, oh, yours.
And it's up to the city code enforcement to decide. That, that smells strong. Not gonna live with that. You gotta do better if that happens.
Uh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said, it's up to the city code enforcement to decide whether the odor is unacceptable or not. And that's gonna.
Well, it could be public, it could be public complaint too. Public complaint.
Smell it at all. That's a violation.
Okay, all right, understood.
And there are fifty-two hundred noses in this.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll let us know.
Remind us if we, if we miss it.
Okay, Barbara?
I have several issues, but I wanna stay on this point. Everybody smiles. Yeah, it's her. No, I'm not going last this time. I will on some.
Well, we'll have you ask all your questions the first time through. So, yeah, we can move on then because, uh, Michael has some questions.
Pretty much in keeping with the issue we're on right now. Switch to the issue of noise. Okay, uh, you have the four buildings on the ninety-five right now that are right in front of Gate subdivision. Okay, do these internal, internal loop systems, is that how you refer to them? Are they still on the outside of the building?
Closed loop, no, they're not.
They're on the inside of the building?
On the inside of the building.
Is it a system that goes through the walls or are they units?
It's a, it's a, it's, one's a condenser. And then there's the one that's the blower, the fan that moves the air around the, around the air, around the rooms. So that sits inside. So that's the closed-loop system.
So what's?
Air only goes through with its end. So it's inside of the building that's insulated fully.
So there are people across the freeway complaining about building one and they have for a couple few years at least that I'm aware of. Okay, and they continue to complain even this past several days since this hit the agenda. Okay? Um, I don't, I don't live over there, so I don't know how loud it is. But is there a noise factor with the new ones you're going to be getting as opposed to the existing ones on building one?
The noise factor.
Is there, is it loud for the neighborhood?
I don't think so, no, it's not. We, we operate, we operate in the middle of cities in downtown Los Angeles and high, in, high condensed cities and we don't have any complaints.
I used to live and work in downtown LA and you can't hear yourself think. So it would blend in with all the other noise.
I don't hear it.
Once again, like I said, these are different units, so they don't work the way. There, it's a whole, it's a split pack, it's a split unit. It doesn't work that blower, the fan, everything that's not outside of the building that's sitting outside the building that's humming all day. It's inside of the building.
Okay, so the, the noise part of the AC unit is not going to exist outside of the building anymore.
It's gonna be no louder than a regular five, regular AC unit that has that fan blowing outside.
Five ton. It's pretty loud if I'm outside.
Well, then it's the same unit. It's the same fan blower.
But it's on the inside.
Blower, yes. No, the fan blower that you have outside, the new ones, there are more, there are more, way more efficient on the noise. But that same fan blower has to sit outside because it's blowing air, it's cooling the radiator. But the main humming, the fan blow, the fan that's blowing, the main one that's moving the air around, it's inside the building now.
Okay, so the buildings on the ninety-five, you have four humongous buildings. They're gigantuan, okay? And the ACs aren't there yet.
Yes.
Right? These are the ones that are still two years out?
The, the, yeah, ACs inside, they're inside already hanging, the handlers, the, the, the closed-loop systems. The fans, the condenser units are actually also are on site that are gonna be put on, on the inside of the buildings and this, around the buildings. They're already on site, but they haven't been put on, put in place yet.
So whatever's on the outside is not there yet?
No, it's on site, but it's not installed yet.
So, um, how far do you think that noise is gonna travel with all four of those buildings? There's no, it's going to create an echo chamber. It already does for all the traffic. Soon as you put the walls on, okay? There was an increase in noise just from traffic. So, uh, my concern is if the people across the freeway on building one are already having noise issues. Some of that may or may not be coming from the truck traffic, the highway traffic, freeway traffic, okay? But it increased substantially when building one got built and started operating. All right? So in your opinion, with the highway ninety-five noise factor, is it going to be the same as building one? Or once you get building two built with the new units, is building two going to be not as loud as building one?
Well, that's echoing right off the building. When the trucks pass by, that's just, that noise just echoes right, hits the building and just goes right back out that way with the, with the winds forcing everything towards that side of the.
Okay, so you have a reverberation feedback on the decibels of noise. Okay, I've already researched this, all right? So it's bouncing off the building and going across the freeway to the other residents across the freeway, okay? And it has been for several years. However long it's been open, it's been an issue.
I've only been operating that building for six months, man. We've only took COVID, we started operations within six months of the building.
Okay, so.
We didn't build the building, we didn't put the building there.
I understand that, but my question is with this addition, okay? You're going to still have five-ton AC units.
I'm not gonna be that close to the street. I'm gonna be on top of I ninety-five, on, on behind the building, behind the big building.
Has the city received any complaints? Noise complaints? No?
These people probably haven't talked to the city about it. So, um.
Well, that's the only way we know though.
That's not the only way. I, I have verbal complaints being issued. It's not the only way we know. People are verbally telling me, okay?
Then have you taken it up with the city? And I don't know how, it should work like the smell, like he's talking about. The only way you know is if people go to the city and complain about it.
But, and, but, noise is different.
Correct.
Where, because there is a, a limit. It's like, I wanna say eighty-six.
It can be measured.
Oh, for noise, yeah, yeah.
But I'm sorry.
Back finish? Okay, so with this new internal ACs that are twenty-four months out, okay? Those should be lower in noise because some of, some of the fan system or whatever part of that system is on the inside of the building, right?
Yes, ma'am, which is insulated.
Okay, and so the fan itself is a fan noise as opposed to the generator and all the other parts of the AC.
Yes.
So the only part of the newer units that are going to be outside are just fans. And therefore the noise should be substantially less.
Will pass the city limit and the, and be by code, yes.
Okay, so in your, um, permit application, and it's a technicality, I don't care except to straighten it out, okay? Uh, this is your permit application. Okay, where you signed on who's, who the owner is and who applies for the job, who has authority to apply for the, for the permit. Number I, three F, list your major machines, give the horsepower and noise rating in decibels. Okay, there's nothing. It's AC units, that's all you write. Okay, so there's no number there. And then G, will the project require a permit for the air pollution control district? I don't know, cause I don't know if the noise, because you're very conscious of the environment. Do you run into a noise factor that might require that?
City has all the mechanical outlines and all the new stuff for all the new buildings. So, yes. It is submitted. The city has all the.
So is it even, so even though you didn't put it on the application, you provided it to the city on the decibel ratings.
Yes.
And what the decibel ratings on the number two building.
Comes, the, the, the unit already comes with manufacturing, with, with the manufacturer has. And you just have to do a sound test, which is a deputy inspector. It'll come do a sound test, sign off on the perm, sign off on the permit and you submit that to the city.
That's only one. You're gonna have a ton of them. And especially out on the ninety-five.
That's the, that's the city inspector that's gonna do his test and make sure that we meet the code.
With all of them running at the same time, there are numbers that you have to meet. Okay, that's good. Okay, now on the permit application on paragraph I, five, identify any other licenses you hold for cannabis in California. That's not here either. And you said you had twenty current ones? So I'm wondering if we can get a list someplace?
Ma'am, ma'am, that doesn't work like that. There's different entities that own it. And then there's a management company. We are the management company that operates, or the brand operates different entities that have.
Well, the only one I'm concerned about is entities supplying for the license.
MSB facility, yes. MSB facility has only MSB facility that's registered to. We are the management company that manages the business.
MSB is supplying. Do you have other, any other licenses in California?
Not under MSB, no, ma'am.
Um, okay, uh, now on the permanent versus temporary permit, right on the first page of the application, I had a note, um, the second paragraph, second, very last sentence, conditional, the condition has been added to this resolution, which will require the applicant that prior to issuance of a permanent certificate of occupancy for building two, applicant will achieve odor control that really might note is, are we therefore gonna issue a temporary permit just to keep you going? Apparently that's what the city manager is saying, that you could get a temporary permit. So that's basically meaningless at this point. If you need to shut that building down and in order to gain control of the odor, then this is, it's gonna be a temporary permit. So the fact that this condition is issued without saying that in the conditions doesn't mean anything. Um, okay. Um, that's more, I, I'm gonna skip, there's a couple of typo type things in here. I'm gonna skip. And I'll just notify Patrick. They're very small. They're not subject, they're not the sub, the subject of the substance of your application. Um, now you, you'd say in, on, um, the, in the findings on the third page of the resolution, under paragraph D, that very little traffic. Now, when I think traffic of that location, I think of people pulling out onto Lily Hill, right across from the Elks. And people pulling out of that apartment complex, that duplex apartment complex also. Um, I, I don't think there's that much traffic on Lily Hill going downhill, but I would be concerned about traffic. You, someplace in here, you said you had fifty-two, approximately fifty new employees with fifty-two parking spaces. And you then subsequently said thirty to forty. You have thirty-five now, but then you're gonna have thirty to forty new employees. Is that correct? That's what you said. Well, that's not what she said.
So thirty to thirty-five for the new one, thirty-five for the existing one. And we actually, uh, our site plan has sixty parking spaces.
I can't hear you.
Our site plan shows sixty parking spaces and for the employees, the existing building has thirty-five. And the new building will be thirty to forty people.
Okay, so the trips that are going in and out, you're going to have in shifts, um, two shifts?
One shift.
One shift?
One shift. They come in at six, they leave at three.
Go out once.
At three, once, yes.
Are they, do they get a long enough break where they're gonna be going out for breaks for lunch?
Everybody eats inside. We have a break room for, I'll let, I'll let Dan speak to that.
Oh, somebody that can answer that.
My name's Dawn Williams. I, uh, I'm the general manager at the Lily Hill property now. And I'm managing, uh, the construction on Victory as well as the operations at this Lily Hill two building. So to answer your question on, uh, the traffic in and out, we, we only run one shift. We start at six AM. Uh, every employee is allotted a thirty-minute lunch break and yes, they do leave, uh, for lunch. We stagger their lunch schedules in and out. Uh, the anticipation now, I think when that application was filled out, which I actually am the license holder as well as the, uh, filled out the application myself, um, that was our high end on what we do. What we're doing now is we will most likely have least, less traffic in there after we've now been in operations for six months. There at Lily Hill, we have some other learning. So I believe those traffic numbers will significantly go down. Um, but yeah, we will have people in and out. I'd say another twenty-five employees in that building versus fifty. So our parking is definitely su- sufficient to.
Oh, yeah, I'm not questioning about spaces.
Yeah, it's just the traffic.
Car is coming in and out on, on the Lily Hill, okay? All right, thank you. Um, I'll get down. Add all these notes on what we've kind of pretty much covered in paragraphs thirty-three and thirty-four. Think all those dealt with. Uh, a minor issue, someplace along the line, we did this as a city. I'm not too sure what happened. But, uh, we started out when we first legalized marijuana with a certain minimum amount of hours that you had to keep copies of your digital surveillance tapes, okay? Paragraph forty-three A says, security cameras shall be installed and maintained in good condition is used in an ongoing manner with at least two hundred and forty concurrent hours of digitally recorded documentation informed and approved by city manager and any who's designated. And then how, when they run twenty-four hours day, seven days a week. Well, back then, there was a legal requirement that you keep those in case people had to look back on who the bad guy was, right? For a long period of time. And one of our biggest cannabis manufacturers in town had an issue with that because it costs a lot of money to store all that data, okay? So how lo, it doesn't say anywhere in the conditions how long you have to keep it. Um, Patrick, I don't know if that issue goes to you or?
Go ahead, Rick.
Uh-huh. They're required to have the most current two hundred and forty hours of operations, what is it, ten days?
That's ten days.
Yeah, right.
It used to be like six months or beyond.
Yeah, and we looked at it. And then, you're right, in one of the rewrites of the code, we just candidly, we made a, a little like the top and.
So if we don't get the bad guy in ten days, they're free.
Well, I can address what we currently have at Lily Hill. Um, and, and I can't compare to what they have in any other facilities. But we currently in Lily Hill have seventy-three cameras and it records for forty-five days consecutively on our backup server. Um, it's monitored by ourselves as well as our facility in Los Angeles. So. Um, it's monitored by ourselves as well as our facility in Los Angeles, so we far exceeded, uh, what the requirements are, and that's for our safety purposes as well. Uh, we have those same plans laid in place for the four buildings on Victory as well as the building, uh, building number two.
Do you keep it?
It's, it's there, I mean, it's stored, it's forty-five days.
On the server forever.
It's, yeah, it's, we, until we can't capacitate anymore, which we would address once we get, you know, five buildings in the city with potentially more, uh, we'll expand it, but it, it's in our best interest to keep it. It was one of my key objectives when I got here, I changed out the entire system, and we currently have actively, you can walk into our building, which the city inspectors have, the fire marshal has, and we'll go back as far as forty-five days and what I can access onsite, but everything's on a cloud, on our servers, and we can go back, I'm gonna guess, four or five months probably.
And we have three sixty inside.
Correct, I mean, like I said, seventy-three cameras, sixteen cameras outside, and the rest are all inside, two in every grow room, and basically two in every, two to four in every other piece of that facility, there's not a blind spot in that building.
So I'm gonna assume that we don't need to address the conditions, that is in the condition, only that you maintain for ten days, okay? Um, so we have the ten days, my concern was more for our, our commission, what happened to the old days and?
Well, and that we can bring back, and we can, yeah, discuss with the city if that needs to be.
Right, but it won't apply to you, I just needed to cover it, it's not very much time. Um, okay, now the fencing, at this, item number sixty-one, under section four. And then I'm done, I hope. Item sixty-one, the fencing, um, we have, and I'm back to the, back to the sound issue, okay? With the sound crossing the freeway to residents. There is apparently available somewhere, somehow, and I don't know if we would qualify or not, you're gonna build a lot more walls here, and some of them are block and wrought iron, some block or wrought, and/or wrought iron. I don't know for sure what's going up in here, the way it's stated is, it's just a little one liner here, so it's not real clear, and it's not on the diagrams. I couldn't tell on the plans where exactly that fencing is going to go.
Okay.
But my concern is the noise, now there is, uh, you're probably very familiar with Las Vegas, right?
Yes.
And you've seen some of the walls there to, you know, block the sound on the freeways.
Absolutely.
From big, big commercial businesses and whatnot. And somebody told me that there might be a Cal, a Caltrans grant available, you guys know about that already, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, is, can you tell me if, if there is a possibility we could get that grant on the freeway that would also be, constitute a tall enough wall to make a difference with building one and two?
Would have to be done on both sides.
Yeah, it has to be done on both sides for sure, and we have just learned about that grant, and we are definitely would like to be able to look into it and see if we, that applies. Um, I'm not sure if that even comes from us or if it comes from the city directly, but.
Yeah, I think it is the city, isn't it?
I think it's a city thing versus, uh, our property line or whatever, and I'm happy to explain like where our fence lines go compared to our block walls, uh, compared to our chain link and the noise that, that would, I mean, obviously the town's gonna go right through the chain link, but it's opening up into that, uh, wash side on the, I guess that's the south side, Patrick?
Wash is probably where it goes across the freeway to the residence?
No, uh-uh, that's, that's, yeah, exactly, so it's going.
On the east side, yeah, exactly.
Way. Yeah, and then all the block wall will really just come off of Lily Hill Drive, um, there, and then the block wall that we have in between the two buildings as well, so. Um, we've looked into and talked about increasing the sizes of those building, of the walls as well, um, just hasn't.
And that's what I'm wondering, you know, if you, if you, if that can be taken advantage of to save you money or whatever, and also make it block as opposed to wrought iron and block. Wrought iron and block, I assume that's something we do here in Needles a lot, that, is that our design and, um?
Can I comment on which walls are which? So at the street frontage, um, it's the, the block wall with the wrought iron combination, because it's a lot prettier. Um, but then everywhere else, it's a solid concrete block wall, and then the existing chain link fence would be within the block, the perimeter walls. It's, it's basically cutting off our yard from the wash.
So we'll at least have the six-foot concrete block wall, okay?
Yes, yeah, and specifically at the residence, yeah.
You know, deal with the residents across the freeway, but we can at the same time be looking into a Caltrans grant, whatever that is, and that would go in, in front of you on the freeway side, right? There's plenty of room there for that to still happen, depending on where you put your walls, you would.
Yeah, we don't, we're, the current plan to put this new building up doesn't include anything on that ninety-five block wall. That's still Lily Hill one, and there has not been anything that we plan to make any changes to. Um, like I said, the Caltrans grant, I believe, would come through the city versus coming through us, but be on our property line that would help mitigate what you're talking about.
Okay, so none of the wall you're building would mitigate the noise factor for the people across the freeway?
No, just because we're, we're going above them.
Yeah, it's going higher.
We're going above them, so not, we, we shouldn't have any effect whatsoever on anybody on that side of the ninety-five freeway.
I don't have any more pages with paint markers. Oh, let me just double check the, the permit itself, because I think there was a question. We have another cannabis project tonight, and I had some notes, and I don't remember if they were. Um, this part of the business, the application is where the owner signs and the, and/or the lessee, nobody signed here at all, okay? Um, I'm gonna assume that's not a problem at this issue, at this point, Patrick, right? Because usually at least somebody signs there, and we have.
That somebody would be me, so if I need to sign it, I'm happy to sign it.
You sign down below and otherwise, okay, but somebody has, the owner and the lessee are supposed to be up here.
That, yeah, same person.
Really, thank you very much.
Okay, Michael?
I'll try to be quick, first of all, I want you to know, I appreciate you guys coming down here, well, you're out here all the time now, I guess.
Yes, I am.
She is, yeah.
Yes.
Um, but I am enthusiastic and supportive of the project, it sounds very professional, you guys have put the great pockets here. And, and I also wanna try to save you some money, I don't want you to have to keep spending money on, on violations and things like that. So I wanna know, since we've talked about this kind of putting, uh, kind of using the temporary certificate of occupancy, we've talked about putting that in the language, number thirty-four. Is that buying time for him to to, to, uh, fix the problem at building number one? Do I understand that to be correct? I, my concern is that he has an open citation, and I don't want him to have to be spending money every time he gets re-inspected or there's a new, there's a new inspection and it, well, it's not done yet, you owe us another thousand bucks. If, if, if the inspector Alberto knows, and he needs, if he needs to be in the loop on this, if he knows that, you know, that it's going to be corrected, replaced, at three, at three point two million dollars, he said, is that, is that buying him time to get that done? Or is he gonna keep getting notices for not complying?
Well, yeah, go ahead, Rick.
To us, it's, it's not about the money, it's about the solution.
I agree.
And, uh, and that's the way we approach all code issues. The, we believe that what we have seen Stizzy do to respond to the complaints, the, what do you call that, the big five gallon buckets of?
Yeah, that, oh no, on a gel.
Yeah, that, that they, that they, we have witnessed them trying every one of the common techniques. And they make a dent, they make a dent, and it gets better, but it has yet to fully fully seal up the building. Um, so when we have a, uh, somebody who has some violations, we tend to give them time as long as they're constructively working on it, like if you have a, uh, we use the traffic example, if you have a taillight out, we're not gonna follow you down the block, and issue you taillight out ten different times before you get home. But as long as we see and we're satisfied that they are doing their very, very best at this, and we know that there's an ultimate solution, that they have demonstrated their financial ability and their technical expertise to be able to solve it, so.
And if I can, I, I'd like to add to that, just if, if you look at the violations, there was a violation in October, another one in November, another one in December, and then the most recent one we had was in March, um, when we did get the violation, when we came onsite, so that, you know, proof positive, we went almost three and a half months without any odor violations. Um, when they come and address me on a daily basis and say we have odor, we usually can track it back. It could be on a transport days when our doors are open, it could be on a deep clean days when our doors are open, so we, it's inevitable, we're, we're still gonna have it. But what we've done inside the building after those three months of consistent violations, um, to go another three months without one, I think is proof positive that we're doing an excellent job inside the building to create that mitigation. And there's always gonna be, I mean, we are open, we are operating, we are functioning, there's always going to be a chance that someone's gonna drive by and complain, and with respect to the city and the inspectors, they're doing what they need to do, and they're doing their job, and we understand it, but to the respect of ourselves as well, like, we're doing a great job at fixing something that came up in October, again in November, again in December, and we did exceed that three month time, you know?
Started operations, we understood the skeletons in the building.
Right, exactly.
That we had to fix, those are the, I mean, these things are gonna come out, and then, but we address it, actively address it.
For sure.
Well, and it sounds like it's gonna be a two-year.
Well, the thing is.
Possibly a two-year thing.
Over two million, two and a half million square feet across the nation, and the company that's already being built and all these projects that are already allocated, the units that we are using, it is in production, but for this building, I've ca, I've also calculated like, you know, with, because there's a certain amount of money that we can spend at certain times. We've calculated by the time that this building gets us to the point where I could have the cash flow carry all the cost that is starting to be incurred, because I'm gonna stop operations in this facility, I'm gonna, can, I'm gonna incur very big co, very big expenses by stopping that operation. It's also gonna hurt the city on that end as well, because.
Yeah, you would stop production essentially, yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, so I've calculated a time where I can, okay, during this time, I'm gonna have this covering this, and I'm gonna have those projects covering the other four buildings that are being built on spikes, okay, and then I'm in a better spot where I can actually.
Sure.
Take on the cost.
Okay, Michael, yeah, go finish.
You get those four running, and then, um, especially if you get those four running and.
On gate.
And, yeah, and number two up and running, it should kind of it should take this thing out of having to close number one.
It'll stay better at night.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, I, and I'm glad to hear, um, hear what I've heard, uh, Michael's that you are able to maintain business, you know?
That's our goal.
Thanks, bud.
And, and I, I just don't wanna see uh, you know, costing you money, and I know it's not a money thing, but, but I don't, I just didn't wanna see you guys getting stung all the time.
I appreciate that.
I think that that's been clarified, and that our language will change to reflect that in thirty-four condition here. It's kind of looking up for you guys.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Charles, did you have any questions?
You what?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are you finished, Michael, or, okay, I'm sorry, then I will go to Charles. So.
So I guess it wasn't a skunk that I hit on Lily Hill.
It was, actually. I thought I saw your car in the parking lot.
You're scraping it out.
Uh, I had a question on this water system that we've seen the video on.
Yes.
Is that being implemented into all the new buildings?
It's being built, the first model is being built right now, uh, it's going into the Michigan building. And, uh, it, it's taken about four, it's about forty, thirty-five thousand dollars a skid, that's our cost. We have a PLE certified engineer that's been doing, uh, extracting oxygen and, uh, water out of crude oil for the big companies, and also making sure that their waste is being properly extracted as well, so, you know, keeps, that's the engineer that we hired with Bearag, and those, that's the system that we're developing, but everything, all the undergrounds, everything's being built to that system's gonna come in. So once we get the full R and D done and get it certified, you all, you all verify it as well, then it's getting distributed in all the facilities, but the facility is literally wired up to go right on to it, so just a plug and play, just comes connected, and the whole water is gonna be consumed.
And something like that be revamped or installed in the old building later on?
Well, it's gonna be, it's, even the old building is also wired, we all, it's also all, all being collected, because it's all going to a sub pump. Yes.
That's all I got.
That's one of my biggest things, like, you know, serving in the Marine Corps too, like, we learned, like, I've seen bin areas and bin parts.
Well, it makes a big difference the way water is right now, so.
Yeah, same there, for sure.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, move on to, um, the public hearing. So is there any public comment? If not, no public comment, I will close the public, um, hearing, public comment. Was there any other discussion or deliberation from the?
I had one question for the city manager. Can always count on, well, I, I kinda asked him.
You're just a problem, Marshall Park.
That's why I'm here, God did it, what can I say?
Oh my.
I am the way I am. Um, I would, I was asking with commish, with Commissioner Wright's questions, uh, can we waive the odor penalty fees for, until they can get their new system?
Well, Patrick's on too, that might be something you could start discussing, Patrick, if we could work with them on their, um, citations, I guess as long as there's an agreement and, you know, I don't know if that's.
One of them was, the last one was a thousand fifty dollars.
They've paid their citations, except for this last one, so, I don't know.
Were only a hundred and two hundred dollars, they were kind of small, but they do get bigger, the more you find the time you let it go, I don't know why that one.
Rick had stepped out for a moment, so we're kind of in between.
We will take note of the testimony that was taken today, and I will work with the city manager to identify how to move forward with the existing code enforcement violations.
I just asked about waiving their, um, violation fees until they get their new system as well.
Sort of work with them, so.
So there's only one open, right, just for the record, they've been, they went, they went ahead and paid all the other ones, there's only one open. Uh, I will work with the city manager, as the city manager is the only individual in the city that can waive a citation, so I will work with them based on the testimony was taken today, and we'll get that addressed.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
And, uh, there was a question asked earlier about, uh, they mentioned they're the most prolific revenue generator in the city. Uh, after they got all of their rooms up and running, the answer is yes. But while they only hit two or three or more until they got all nine, all nine, about six, nine weeks after that, then.
And that's his building one?
Yes, so the most recent past month. And, and part of that is, remember, we're still, uh, chairman if I can, uh, we're still on a grocery receipts tax. So others may have grown more, but they didn't get the price that Stizzy commands in the marketplace. So that combination of volume and price translates into revenue. So their, their statement was correct as it pertains to the last two months.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we will, um.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay, I'll move on to, um, approve the findings of facts, I guess there's a couple of questions there that we want, um, was it thirty-four and, yes, Patrick?
Uh, Chair, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, so what we're gonna request is that you approve the findings, and then
As is.
As is, and then you're gonna amend condition number thirty-four to, in a sense, read, you know, a temporary certificate of occupancy will be.
to, in a sense, read, you know, a temporary certificate of occupancy will be issued for the new building to, to replace the existing AC units with a closed-loop system to allow building one to be changed out. Basically, in a nutshell, that's what, that's what I heard from the board, is that they would like to see that the first building have ACs changed out, but let the, let the new building come online so that they can be operational. That's what I heard from the board, so we can go ahead and amend that condition to basically state that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would only ask that you change the temporary C will be issued, because there might be other issues that have.
That hold it back, yeah.
May, which may be issued. I just don't want to be boxed in on this issue as if it's the override. So just, but other than that, Patrick, we think it's good.
Okay. So then with that, I'll move to motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve that we recommend to approve Resolution zero five dash one one dash two zero two two dash one. Conditional use permit zero one dash one eight dash two oh one seven. This is the amendment to that conditional use permit, zero one dash one eight dash two zero one seven dash two PC, adding a twenty thousand square foot second building for cannabis cultivation located at eleven oh five Lily Hill Drive, also known as APN zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five seven dash zero 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 zero, and zero one eight six dash one nine one dash five zero dash zero 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 in the C one zone with the new language of condition number thirty-four stating that.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Regarding the temporary cert of occupancy.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it's unanimous. Okay, it passed. Welcome, good luck. It's a great project. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for what you've been doing.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Okay, with this, we will move on to number three. Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of an application from Edward Andrade, representative for two zero nine I Street Incorporated for a conditional use permit for a twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation facility in the C two general commercial zone located at two zero nine I Street, also known as APN zero one eight six dash zero nine four dash five one dash zero 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 zero, formerly known as APN zero one eight six dash zero nine four dash zero one dash zero 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 zero, zero one eight six oh nine four dash zero two zero 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 zero, zero one eight six zero nine four three four zero 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 zero, and zero one eight six zero nine four dash thirty-five zero 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 zero. Staff report.
And, excuse me, Patrick, for the record, we did receive a communication from Manny, Manu Patel, who was in favor of this project, and also Anita Hamel.
Okay, thank you, honorable chair and commissioners. In front of you, we have Resolution zero five dash eleven dash two zero two two dash two PC regarding two oh nine I Street cultivation facility, cannabis cultivation facility. All right, again, this is an approval of a conditional use permit for twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation located in the C two general commercial zone at two oh nine I Street. So basically, in front of you, we're looking at the vicinity map. The project is located between I Street and H Street and Broadway and Third Street. The project is Zone General Commercial. The site is directly south of a permitted fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square foot cultivation and distribution facility north of an existing cultivation facility east, a residential housing, commercial businesses, and west of Needles Point Liquor and a permitted eleven hundred square foot dispensary. So as you can see, it's located in the developed area of the city. And then here's an aerial looking at the site. The parcel was four different parcels, but recently has been approved for a lot line merger, so all the four parcels were condensed into one. And then, so here you can see the entire parcel as is, the, they're at the site, there's existing, two existing residences, and then the other site is vacant. So the east side is vacant, the west side has two residents at the site. So the applicant has applied for the construction of a two-story twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square foot cultivation. The project is situated on point five two acre property located at the southwest corner of two oh nine I Street, is located in the general commercial zone, which does allow for this type of activity to occur. The lot has two existing residences abutting the southeast side of I Street that will be demolished and removed, and then followed by grading and the construction of the building. The project will operate seven days a week from ten AM to eight PM, and would employ six full-time employees, four part-time. Adequate parking has been identified at the site. So here's the existing site plan. As you can see, the project is located on the H Street side between Third and Broadway. There's an existing, two residents at the site that are going to be demolished, and then the palm trees at the site will be removed as well. So here's the site plan that's proposed. So basically, there's two-story lower level, upper level area of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square foot building to be located at the site. The parking will be on the west side of the building, and then the entrance with the employees walking in will be at the north side of the building, located up top here. And so looking at the floor plan, you can see that there's going to be, the lower level will have six cultivation flowering rooms, a vegetation room, fertigation, water tank, storage room, trimming room, vault room, and an office, a harvest storage room, a break room, a clone room, an electrical room, and a security room with two bathrooms. So you can see that on the first story. And then the upper level will include nine cultivation rooms, flowering rooms, totaling fifteen total in the cultivation, containing ten thousand and eighty square feet of indoor cannabis cultivation. Two drying rooms and two stairways will be located on the upper levels. So looking at the proposed elevations, as you can see, it's going to mimic the building across the street, so you're going to see the, the metal building with the tan color, light stone color at the site. And then those are the elevations for the, so those are the elevations facing the alley and facing Broadway, that's what you're going to see. And then here's the proposed front elevation facing I Street, and then the proposed rear elevation facing the liquor store. So a landscape plan has been provided by the applicant for this site, and so you're going to be seeing various types of ground cover, shrubs, and trees. So a total of thirty-four sunshine, liggstrom, ground cover, and then you're going to see river rock, gravel, boulders being found throughout the perimeter of the building, and then plants, planting of shrubs, Texas Ranger forty-three, eleven red yucca, and then there'll be three honey locust trees planted at the site. So there's going to be significant amount of shading provided. All right, so looking at the site photos, you will see this is the, off of Broadway site, looking at the existing building that's at the site, you can see that the trees are in the process of being removed, and that's the house, the residential structure, it's existing, that's going to be demolished. And then here's the side off of I Street that you're looking towards the, you're facing south, or you're facing east towards the backside off I Street. This structure will also, these two structures will be removed. This is the same house that you see off of Broadway, and then this is the vacant structure that's found off of I Street. And then just to kind of give you perspective, this is the project that was permitted across the street as the nursery, it's a cultivation project. Go back. And then here's the retail that was also permitted next to this building. And then here's the I Street cultivation that's located directly behind the building. And then here's a rendering that's been provided by the applicant of what they anticipate the site to look at, to look like. And this is facing, this is off the Broadway site. And so there's been added conditions to this project. So prior to the building permit release, the applicant will submit street improvement plans showing insulation of sidewalk curb and gutter and driveways to show accessibility per city standards. So there'll be street improvements. The applicant will also install a foot tall wrought iron pilaster, wrought iron fencing, or a combination of both. Basically, from the photo, you will see that what they provided us was a pilaster and wrought iron. So that's what, but they have a condition to go either way with it. And so, again, the indoor cultivation condition that's found in every cultivation project is that it will not adversely affect the health or safety of nearby residents, businesses, or properties by creating offensive odors, dust, glare, traffic impacts, disturbing people, normal sensitivity residing present to adjacent properties. And so a closed-loop system for ventilation will be installed to filtrate the cannabis odors. So like every conditional use permit, again, you've got the findings that have to be made. So one, it's within the jurisdiction permissible to use table, yes, the application is complete, yes. The development is in general conformity with the Needles' general plan, so the facility is located in the general commercial C two zoning designation. So regarding our ordinance, six twenty-nine does permit cannabis cultivation operations within the facility with the CUP and regulatory permit. Number four, develop, development is in harmony with the area in which it's located. Previously stated that it is on a developed point five two acre parcel, which involves the demolition of two existing buildings to create a two-story twenty-five thousand square foot building. It is located in an area that is developed and does have cultivation activity, as stated in this report. The conditions of approval require that only cultivation may occur at the site. No manufacturing products or sale may be permitted. Very little shot is expected with ten vehicle trips per day. Therefore, this type of project is consistent with the uses occurring at the vicinity of the project. Finding number five, that the development will not materially endanger the public health project site is located in the commercially developed area of the city. Conditions of approval have been placed on the project to ensure appropriate lighting, security systems, ventilation are in place for the health and safety purposes. And then the last finding, the development will not substantially injure the value of the jointed properties. So it's properly zoned, it's surrounded on all sides by commercial activities. The project has been conditioned to install landscaping with plant species in accordance with the city adopted planning palette. These requirements will assist in maintaining the value of the jointed properties. So our recommendation is to approve Resolution number zero five dash eleven dash two zero two two dash two PC, recommending to city council approval of the CUP for the twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation in the C two zone located at two oh nine I Street. And I now stand ready for any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Patrick.
And I believe the applicant is there as well. They can provide their presentation.
Okay, Bob, you had a question, and then we'll ask the applicant.
Yeah, I've got a question of Patrick. You stated that there's going to have a closed-loop system for ventilation, and we just, we just learned that we have an open-loop system, HVA system on one of the buildings, cultivation buildings. So the question is, is this going to have a closed-loop HVAC system as well as venting system?
Yes, we're going to require that all, because moving forward, we're getting smarter as we go through these projects, and so the ones that occurred previously in the past, we are requiring the same standard system across the board that these, the applicant's able to provide their version of it. But basically, they are required to have the same conditions as the other applicants and not create any odors. And so what we have found is that these systems that are put into place will not create odors in the fences at the sites. Twenty-seven oh one is another example that they were able to mitigate odors in the city by providing a system that would adequately remove the odors from the project. So we're going to leave it up to the applicant to address that, because we don't want to take total agency from them, but they will be required to install a system that doesn't emit any odors, and that's part of their conditions of approval.
But not, not specifically having to be closed-loop? That HVAC?
Yeah, the closed-loop system is, is something that we've, we've looked at and we're, we are going to require, because we have found that it does help developments. As Mr. Daniels pointed out, that the research is there that it would help not emit any odors. So we are going to require that a system is put into place, and at this point in time today, a closed-loop system is being recommended.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The applicant?
Hi, Cheryl Montanez, five two six eight, Dulphomis. I moved, so I have a new address. In Phelan, California. I want to address that I know the Lily Hill project very well. I was involved in the sale to Suzy. That building was built with, they had less than expertise at building that building. When we bought it, Suzy did a lot to change it. That AC system that they have, no one uses. It was something that was sold to an unknowing soul, that this is the best thing since sliced bread, and it's super expensive. So it's a heartache that it doesn't work, because there was a lot of money, and, you know, and Suzy in turn paid a lot of money to gain a system that's really kind of crappy. As a whole, the industry really does split systems, which is keeping the, just the condensers outside. So the only thing going outside is that thin little copper wire with the coolant. The inside is the air transferring and all that, so everything is staying inside. The little bit of smell that's leaving the rooms and getting in the halls and whatever, then we've had other ways of mitigating that with the carbon filters and things like that. So I think the Lily Hill, you get scared of what's happening at Lily Hill, because it is an isolated, nobody else in your area has that type of system. It's variations of different split systems and package. There are some, like, cassette package units and stuff that work differently that don't exchange the air outside, but they're going to have that problem because it's taking that air outside. But for the general, I've never seen anybody else do it. And it was a company that invented something that was supposed to be for cannabis and sold it to unknowing soul, you know, somebody had to try it and let it fail, so. It's unfortunate. So our system, it'll be much like the, you guys refer to it always as Taco Bell, which isn't there anymore, but those Taco Bell buildings, same kind of setup with the same type of split system, ten ton, five ton units. With the, and we already built in that fan kind of system that he was doing over there to blow the, blow everything up, and by the time it comes down. And I don't think they've had at twenty-seven oh one any complaints in a long, long while.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't have a presentation, but if you have questions.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, commission questions to either the applicant or staff?
This is like the third or fourth one that we've approved. What's the status on the other ones?
Of my other projects? At twenty-seven oh one, you approved building.
There's one, it's a Volvo or something.
They are.
Across the freeway.
Yeah, 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 that one, it's in plan check, so I don't have their actual permit in hand, but it's being bid by several different local contractors.
I'm just curious, because nothing's going on with some of the.
Well, once we leave you, then we still got to deal with getting plans approved, so you got another three to four months, you know? And then that's when they really got to start spending the dollars. And if you're building buildings, or the panels are a long ways out. So we do have some lead time issues on some of the stuff, but I know they are impressed.
There's things going on.
Yeah, we're in plan check, so I, once I give them the permit, I'm kind of out of it. They hire a general contractor, so they don't have their permit in hand, so they're not able to actually do any construction yet. So as soon as, I don't know, Will Dan, the outside company that does the plan checking, so we've just, we've gotten one set of comments back and resubmitted, so just kind of waddling through that process. It takes a bit.
Any other questions? Down here?
No, I don't have any questions. I have comments.
Please share them.
Here's the thing, here's what's on my mind.
Here's what's on my mind.
This is a time to do it.
Kind of a tough one for me, because I, I'm so much into, I'm so much into envisioning this town, especially Broadway. And, and Front Street as, as our kind of our, what I wanna save. And, um, and kinda keep home, kinda keep Main Street, USA looking. And, um, you know, having another metal building on Broadway is kinda taking away from that vision. But I also understand that there's gotta be some compromise and that the building looks, if it's anything like Taco Bell buildings, or I mean, the rendering looked great. And especially since we've already approved the nursery across the street. And it would, it's hard for me to say no to this, but I'm just, you know, anything closer to the depot, or anything closer to that core downtown area. I can live with this. We've already approved some.
And I appreciate that you guys moved it down the street to start that, so that it wasn't a big controversy. And I highly recommend putting together everywhere, even like Victorville, downtown, like Pasadena. They all do have that little like special zoning area that they put a development standard and they have a specific look they're going for.
Right.
And we should do that.
That's what I, yeah, and that's what I'm hoping can happen here.
Right. We did the wrought iron. I didn't wanna put a nice building with a nice front and then a block wall. That's why I did the wrought iron to leave it open, because I think a lot of times we're like, block emit. Nobody knows what's going on inside that building other than you guys. And you know what I mean, like? But when you drive down and you're not from here and you don't know, like it, if we can have a nice building and it looks pretty, and I'm putting all this twenty-five percent architectural, and then I'm slamming a block wall in front of it, and nobody gets to see any of the landscaping except for the employees, right? It makes no sense. So I feel like on that street, because we do have block walls at some of them. And, but I think like, again, the Taco Bell, it looks nice. Now that they got the Taco Bell down, they're getting some of the construction stuff out of the way and starting to come together.
And the plus is that, that one house thrown in the corner is.
I think those are gone. The palm trees are gone.
It's just kinda breaks my heart that another historical house.
It's not. We checked. Don't say the H word. Yeah, I know. It's been here a long time. Yeah, but yes, I get it. And there are not lots of beautiful houses around town that have been, started to get restored. And we did look into some costing and it's pretty up there, just because if, once they do get so far dilapidated, it's, some aren't, you can't bring them back without spending way more than it would cost to demo and build a new house even, right? So I appreciate it. I know that a lot of people I knew, we knew.
Maybe we could paint some shutters on this sidewall or something.
Right. So anyway, I said my piece.
Thank you. Barbara, you had a question?
Yes, I'm pretty sure I got this one. First of all, the app is deficient, because who is Mr. Patel? Is he an owner or lessy?
You can come up and do the business structure.
Okay, so you just, you signed and notarized, but you did.
Didn't put what he was.
So owner and lessy, that's all I need to know. Not coming after you yet.
That's why I was like, we get into ownership structure, it's gonna have to be them.
That was just a question I had, okay? The only comment I have is very similar to Commissioner Wright's. We didn't have the benefit in our packet of the rendering, okay? So I couldn't envision what you were doing with the wrought iron on the sidewalk. Also, are you, are you repaving sidewalks here? Have you been requested to do that? You have, okay.
You missed that part?
That way, that's a good.
That's, I know, that's an expensive thing.
Yeah, I know, but.
Yes, that was one of the extra conditions that Patrick read off.
Okay, I missed that. Oh, the added condition.
Yes, it was an added condition.
He saves those.
Go back, Patrick, and show her the screen. It's on there.
So, well, that's, I'll take your report. So what I'm talking about, you can go back, Patrick. I like the rendering.
She wants the rendering.
Put it up in my living room, the rendering. Across the street, you were here for the nursery hearing.
Yes.
At the planning commission. And you paid very close attention to see what we're gonna do with all that metal building stuff and everything. When we approved that, which is in substance, in essence, what you're doing, except for what they agreed to do in front of the building. There was something other than these columns with, with Patel's or whatever you call them, with the wrought iron. There was something more designed.
Oh, you're talking about the fence?
It was, I can't remember what it was, but it was.
Did they do half and half?
It was like a work of art, okay? So that right in front, you could still see through it. It was wrought iron, but there was something special about it. I can't remember what. So that it looked more flowery or designed, artwork-y, okay? So it was more attractive. Okay, you remember that? So you were here for that.
Remember that part?
I think that was on the building itself.
No, it's.
They just stacked stone on the building. I was paying attention to the building.
It's, it's, um, it's spaced away from the building enough to add, well, like this is spaced away from the building, okay?
You don't have much space in the front.
But it's the same that the nursery had. It's the same that the nursery had. Can you find out what that was and, um?
Patrick can inform.
See if you can.
And see what it costs.
Make it more attractive rather than, to me, this just looks boom, 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 boom.
Well, I don't want you to look at the wrought iron though. See, I want you looking at the building and my landscaping.
Theirs was wrought iron. You could see through.
Yeah.
Okay.
They just had a fancier wrought iron or something with.
Yeah, there was something, and I think it was lower, okay?
I think they may have done half, or like you do the half block wall and then just the top are of wrought iron. I wasn't, you know, I was paying more attention to that. I know, but I was paying attention to that building. I didn't care about the fence.
About the metal building. And as opposed to.
Probably even metal art that can be added, you know what I mean? We can come up with some kinda themes or something. Metal art, something that can go on the right. We can look into some options of, um, cause I know, you know, some of the other applicants, like the older ones have like the metal art in the, instead of the landscaping and did different stuff like. No, I'm not talking about that, but I'm just saying.
Tijuana down on Broadway. That's not what I'm talking about.
I'm talking, but I'm talking about, we can do something. I'm just trying to give it a theme.
But one thing to consider too, though, if you do, do a block wall there and you get a lot of kids that walk by there, that's more inviting to vandalize.
Yeah, I meant.
No, I don't wanna do block. I'm just thinking of putting some decor piece that they can weld to the wrought iron.
Got it. Design.
Well, can you?
I mean, in a normal industry, I'd be able to put my logo or my something, you know, I put a pot leaf on a can.
Patrick, can you please give, provide her with a copy of whatever the people are doing?
Is that what you're three?
And see if she can do something similar, rather than just straight up and down pillars and make it more artsy.
Rick, you wanna interject?
Remember very distinctly that, because that was a large calling card, that project.
And it was on the corner there. It was on the building.
I don't remember that.
We have plans that we will.
Yeah, share them with her and then.
You're throwing the whole wall on the.
The sides. They stacked all, or, yeah, they said stacked stone, but it was actually slate that they're putting on the corners and I think in the middle section.
It wasn't on the building, not what I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Maybe I envisioned it incorrectly.
You just imagined it the way you wanted it, Barbara.
Or wrought iron, pardon?
You just imagined it the way you wanted it.
But I'm, I'm trying to see if we can avoid having this straight up and down rigid appearance and have something more as an enhancing artistic.
As a former welder, there's what they call scroll work. They'll take metal and roll it. It can be tack welded to those pickets that are vertical. You can have all different kinds. They have ones with lizards, they have ones with snakes. There's all kinds of designs.
Phillips does that, don't they? Yeah, Phillips does that. So you can check with the local contractor on this.
He's Cliff's in on it and he knows everyone local, so we'll do, yeah, well, I was just trying to my mind like what kinda theme that we would do that, I know will fit in. Yeah.
And not even the whole street, just kind of in front.
On that corner.
Off in the building.
They're wanting us to do lot, Route sixty-six. The crowd is yelling for Route sixty-six, like.
Let's go on in that. You can, you can come up with some design or something toward the front, the front of the building.
Front beating Broadway, right? Can we specify on that one, though, that it's along Broadway? Because my front is really Ice Street. My address is Ice Street. But so we're clear, I know you're worried about Broadway, right?
Just right, right where your front.
At the door, at the.
This rendering looks like the front of the building. Are we facing Ice Street here?
No, your face, that is facing Broadway, but my entrance is over there. My address is really Ice Street.
Yeah, so not the entrance, just the front.
The front.
The Broadway part of the building.
So just, okay, so you just wanna in those first two little, like those three sections or whatever?
Is where your cap comes out.
Got it.
In that general area, just a touch of.
No other que, you didn't have any questions, Bob? Or did you forget what it was now? Well, if, if not, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
No? All right, I'll close the public hearing and move back to the commission. Do you have any further deliberation or questions? And if not, I will ask for a motion to approve. Oh, Patrick, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, so we're gonna add a condition that states that we would like some metal art along the Broadway side of, uh, on, on the wrought iron, correct?
Correct.
You wanna add that condition? Okay.
Okay, and then with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. The conditional use permit for twenty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two square foot cannabis cultivation facility in the C two general commercial zone located at two oh nine Ice Street. Also known as APN zero one eight six dash zero eight, zero nine four dash five one dash zero 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 zero. With the added wrought iron enhancement.
I'll second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, unanimous. Okay, passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's beautiful. All right, I'll move on to board requests. Michael? Thank you. Great project. Thank you. I'm not reading very well tonight, am I? All right, we'll review and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget for the Development Services Department Building Planning Engineering Code Enforcement Staff Report.
Patrick, do you wanna take the lead, please?
Yes, sir. No problem. So in front of you, planning commissioners, this is just, um, this is, this is an action item, because we wanna recommend this to the city council. But just to give you an idea, we like to run through the Development Services Department budget, which includes engineering, building code, and planning. And so these, this is the budget that you have in front of you. The city manager, myself, and the director of finance met to, to review the proposed budget and, and we made adjustments. So basically what you're seeing is the version one for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which includes the summary of changes for the budget and highlights the differences. So some of the expenditure budget, uh, budget line items increased for the costs of the contractual pay increases. So as you might know, that we're in year two of three of the, um, the, the study to implement the raises for the city staff. And so you're seeing those increases occur within this budget. We're, um, we're proposing that to the city council. In addition, you're seeing the increase. Basically, we received fourteen million dollars with the state water resources funds and grants. Rainey's done a great job for us. And so with that, it's great to receive the money, but if you can't implement it, uh, that creates a problem for us. And so we've added in the budget, uh, in the engineering department, professional services project manager to oversee the development of these projects, because we're in deep need of having somebody on staff to help assist, get us through that. Um, additionally, there's a reduction for consulting services by hiring an in-house building inspector. We're in the process of working that over. And, you know, those are the major changes in revenues. We're seeing an increase of planned site review revenues. Obviously, there's more projects coming to the city. More folks wanna get projects built in here, so those are more revenues. And then there's an increase in cannabis compliance revenue, because there are more cultivation projects that are going through this planning process that are, as Cheryl pointed out, going to the building process, which takes some time, but now they're coming online. Like at one hundred Victory, those four buildings will be coming online this fiscal year, this next fiscal year that we're looking at right now. So it's exciting. But that's basically in a nutshell, the revenues and expenditures for, for my group. If you have any questions, I, I stand available.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the staff? Barbara?
Nothing for me.
I, there, on line three, Patrick, there is a building and safety decrease in building permit revenue. So is that like COVID or everybody doesn't have any money anymore or what? Or we're out of buildings?
So there was a, no, they're, they're coming online, but during COVID, we saw everybody, uh, myself included, go to Home Depot and, and decide to renovate their house at that point in time. And so what we did was we, we set a high budget number. And so we, we'd come down uh, to be conservative, to make sure that we're not over budgeting ourselves, um, and we wanna be fiscally responsible. So we're not, uh, this is our forecast, and basically that's what budgets are, our forecast. But we did see an increase in building permits as due to COVID. And so, uh, moving forward, we anticipate that having a slight reduction.
Okay, and then the next item, um, is this fines or fees or what? The increase in cannabis compliance revenue, is that?
No, ma'am. So basically, uh, what it is, is when a cannabis, so in order to be operational in the city of Needles, you're required to have a conditional use permit, which is, which your board governs. And then there's the regulatory license that's associated, which is the five thousand or four, four eight six five, uh, four thousand number for, um, to get your regulatory license. And so those, those cannabis compliance revenues are a result of businesses getting in a operation requiring a regulatory license to be operational. So that's what you're seeing. So we're, we're anticipating, uh, these buildings that are coming online that are, you currently looked at. So three fifteen Balboa, uh, eleven fifty, the nursery project, uh, the four buildings over on, um, uh, Hundred Victory. Uh, we anticipate those coming on, two fifty Balboa, that's another one. Uh, we anticipate those coming online this fiscal year, so they'll be paying their five thousand dollar regulatory fee, which pays for the code enforcement to go out there and do the inspections and, you know, go to the site and, and bring them online.
Okay. Uh, next one, planning and zone under expenditures, not revenue. Uh, next one, twenty-two point six percent increase. Um, and it says reallocation of associate planner between planning and utilities. So, um, is that, we're now going to carry part of the utilities budget and lose part of our planning department?
No, uh, let me, Patrick, if I might.
Yes, sir.
All, a, a lot of the positions in the city, for example, mine, uh, my cost is fifty percent utility, forty-five percent general fund, and five percent to the former already gave. Well, the associate planner was being paid to do work on the utility, for the utility.
Not us?
Well, she was being, her time is split. So we, we looked at what our expectation is of this new position, new person coming up. And Patrick asked what he believes is a more accurate allocation of where her, uh, his or her time would be. So it's just how much is paid for by the utility versus how much is paid for by. So it's just how much is paid for by the utility versus how much is paid for by general fund.
So more, so more is being paid by planning as opposed to by the utilities, by twenty-two point six percent?
Right, right, because.
They're getting less of her than we are.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and you said we did hire a new building inspector, that's on board right now, in the process, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just take a minute, um, uh, our building official, like city engineer had, like Alberto, uh, off doing other things. So we have a contract building right now, we backfilled it with a contract building official, which is plan review, they're engineers to review all the detailed construction plans. And then we also have a contract for building inspection, who does all deal inspections. Alberto was being the engineer, the building engineer. With him no longer here, we're using the contract, but Patrick is looking at, because I firmly believe that we need to have one person on staff, whether it be the building official or building inspector for continuation of services, so, uh, so we are grooming, and, and I, I think where we're gonna partly end up is hiring the new building official.
To be an engineer?
Well, um.
Or he has to be an engineer before retiring.
Yes, we want to get, that's the ideal candidate that we're looking for. And then continue to contract the outside inspections, because I'm not yet convinced that we have a sustainable development level. Now, because when you look back at the revenues that you pointed out, there was a blip, and that was the hotel billing permit fee, which was supposed to be eighty thousand dollars. So while that showed great that year, in your subsequent, it shows less revenue, and that, that's part of.
So it's on the hand.
Right, so what, yeah, so what we will do is we will monitor that, and as it, it really stabilized, that this new higher reality, then we would look to bring, uh, inspector in halves.
Okay, well.
But, uh, I don't, because it's easier to cancel a contract than oftentimes it is to terminate it.
Well, and we just need to make sure we have a qualified person, because we're building some really large buildings and, yeah.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Was Alberto then doing both engineering and? Yes, his, his time was split about, about fifty-fifty, it was, uh, in this department as building official, but then hit about half of his time was being charged to all the capital projects. He was our in-house engineer on road design, uh, waterline improvements, so we were sharing those costs.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd love to get, you know, another.
Nice to get somebody like him to have.
Get that PE stand. But, uh, he's chosen to do something else, and, uh, we're making those changes on the block.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open for public comment if there is any. No public comments, so we will close that, uh, any other discussion, discussion or questions from the? No, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, it's clear on the bottom, like the budget.
For the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, okay, is there a second? Second by Michael, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, okay, very good, now we will move on to board requests, Michael?
I have none.
And Barbara?
Um, how are we doing with our, all the moolah we have coming in for the skate park, et cetera? Is everybody having fun and still doing all that?
Your managers, okay.
I, that's all I have.
All right, Bob?
Nothing.
Nothing, Kevin?
I have a question, um, I don't know if it's been my, my memory. It's, it seems like it's been about two years, we had a big mixed-use project that was commercial above and rentals down below, and I know there were a lot of timeframes, uh, where they had projected, you know, things they had to get done or, but I have heard nothing or seen.
Broadway there?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if you could fill me in on that, Patrick, please.
Yeah, no problem, so currently, we're in our second plan review of it, it's in front of us right now, and so we're taking a look at it, we had our site plan review on Monday before I headed out to this conference, and so we're getting those comments together for the applicant, giving it back to them so that they can go ahead and make the corrections that are needed. Um, so it's very much, uh, real at this time in terms of the process to get it entitled, um, that's what we're looking at right now, and so really excited to move this forward. There's just a couple of things that we're currently reviewing, like water system capacity, electrical pa, capacity that we're missing, and so we're working with the applicant to get that information so that we're not overdoing our system.
Are you referring to the, where the old chamber building is?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wonderful, oh, that's good news.
That's great, okay, Charles?
Uh, you'll probably address it anyhow, the water, Bob?
The well.
The well, the, okay, it's all good.
Okay, well?
No, I, I have nothing.
Nothing, okay, I'm good, so we'll have the managers' report?
Okay, um, and, and we, we talked about it a little bit during the budget, um, in budget discussions. We are going to have under construction in the next twelve to fifteen months, uh, between twenty-three and twenty-five million dollars in capital. To the best of my knowledge, the city has never been in that position before, and it requires some retooling of the city staff. My biggest need right now, uh, construction managers, project managers, uh, because we have a three point nine million dollar, call it four million, three point nine six five million dollars rebuild with, uh, splice pad, bicycle park, uh, new field lights, uh, span the dog park, uh, new basketball court, new road, so that terrible road to the dog park will be replaced, uh, we have that, we were also awarded two point three million dollars to build a new city park at between, uh, that covers first and second beach, uh, down by the golf course. Um, there is about five hundred thousand dollars of park improvements that are being done at, uh, Jack Smith Park. For example, there will be a six foot wide, walk, six hundred yard long walking path that's made of recycled tires, uh, so it's got a little bit of cush to it, uh, that has about fifteen different exercise stations.
It's like Marilyn Matthews' plan.
Yeah, it, it kind of feeds into, um, what Marilyn had, had proposed a long time. Those have been funded. Additionally, um, Rainy Torrance has been able to secure, uh, between twelve and fifteen million dollars of water system improvement. And in that is, as you recall, in twenty nineteen, the state decided to adopt limitations on manganese. I, manganese does not cause cancer, it is not a threat to public health. The worst we can figure out is that if you overspray on the white stucco, it'll leave a stain. It's naturally occurring, California's only state that we know of regulates it, but by adopting those standards, it disqualified the use of three of our four wells, so we're down to one well. And then we had a lightning strike, and we were almost a cook goose there for a short period. Luckily, we found the park and got it in with about two hours to spare. Wow, uh, but, so, we, we, we did the bore hole out by, uh, the substation, North Beale Highway, did the bore hole, found more water than we thought, but it had man, it had manganese in it. So we could have put a treatment plant on that, cleaned it up. But what we decided to do was to put the treatment plant down in the floodplain where our other three wells that we can't use, and run those waters through there, and that will instead give us our four wells back. So rather than put it up here, the substation served one well, if we put it down below, um, near the golf course, we, it reopens those four that already exist, and we would have, uh, three twenty-five hundred gallon permanent wells available to us instead of two. So we've taken that choice, and the state has agreed to pay that seven point four million dollars for that. We're looking at about a five million dollar new reservoir, because we're sitting here, uh, in the summer with less than twenty-four, or less than forty-eight hours of water storage. And this will add a fifty percent increase to that storage, so we're looking at a new million, a million, a million and a half gallon reservoir up above the gates area, in part because that is where we have our lowest water pressure. So, but we took the fire needs, uh, into, uh, context there, so we're looking for property and looking, uh, we already have a million gallon tank that we purchased, uh, city bakersfield decommissioned, uh, but we want to be, if we can, add a million and a half again, one hundred percent green. The well and treatment plant, one hundred percent green, by the state of California.
The well going up in gates?
No, just the reservoir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So what, what the wells all do is they, they, they're all connected to a manifold that's down at the.
Down question.
Down, no, no, it's a good question, uh, down at the golf maintenance yard. And then there's a valve down there that depends on which pumps running, you turn it and it sends it up the hill, and we now have two lines to feed.
But that water goes, is gonna be going through the treatment plant, right?
Yes, it'll go, it'll go from the well through the treatment plant into the manifold, up the hill to one of the reservoirs and the new reservoir that we're in, gates, above gates. Then we are doing, uh, between four and six million dollars of street improvements before the end of the year. Uh, and the reason why it varies is, um, we have about three and a half million of cannabis money that has been saved. And then Congressman Obernolte stuffed into a bill nearly nine hundred thousand dollars of a special aisle, an earmark, um, for streets and roads and needs. And then we're working with the county, they're receiving four hundred million dollars of, uh, uh, infrastructure money, and they're taking half of it for their departments, and then they're taking the rest, so each supervisor will have twenty to forty million dollars to make available to jurisdictions, special districts in, within their district. So we have a two million dollar request in to now Lieutenant Colonel Paul Cook, but by the end of the year, we'll change to a new supervisor, uh, Don Ra, out of Yakima. So we're working with their offices on that transition, so it's not a hard number yet. And then there is, uh, between four and five million dollars of the new substation that we are, uh, we have plenty of power allocated from WAP, uh, Westernary Power Administration, who has to help it. To us, but we have gaps in our delivery system in the local grid. So what we're gonna, we built a main transmission line from the Yoni substation, by the way, that's described, oh, near the Indian Village, on Bus Street, and it runs around and then through along the golf course, River Road, and then goes up the hill and goes out all the way to Spikes Road. So when you next look at that, there's three lines at the top that handle sixty-nine KB, KB power. And then there's what's called a twelve KB underbit, so three more lines down here. So we connect the people's homes and businesses off of these lower three lines. So right now, we have, uh, the top three lines aren't being used, but in order to power Stizzy uh, in their first four buildings, we're gonna use those top three lines as an interim measure to deliver power to their buildings, and then build a substation in, uh, probably this, this time next year, where we will reactivate that sixty-nine KB line and take it from the only sub, the only substation to that substation, then Stizzy. So there's some interim measure, but it's a fortified five million dollar substation. We've never built in this community that kind of infrastructure.
You need a bunch of managers.
So, yeah, and, and so it's not, so there's a shift from, because we're staffed at the routine levels of day-to-day demands, and with, with, I mean, we're gonna be at the structure. And it's a different mindset, it's a different set of skills, uh, but we kicked off the Duke Watkins rebuild last week with the initiation of the playground. Now, it's not much, but it's beautiful to us, and that is, we've got the swing set frame up, we've got the climbing apparatus and all that stuff that the kids like, the merry-go-rounds on order, the, uh,
The merry-go-round too?
Bars, you know, all those things, so, uh, and that was really by a great outlet grant from Legacy Foundation, private nonprofit. So we're very grateful to them, but we are putting two additional sets of children's playground equipment, brand new, at Jack Smith and at the new park along the river, the new, uh, between on First and Second Beach.
Can we ever get any grass plant at Jack Smith? Have we ever did any new grass?
Well, we're, we're, we're using about half million dollars right now of grant into Jack Smith for that walking path and.
Grass.
Well, and part of it is, we're, we're changing out the air, the irrigation to be able to manage that better. So there's, uh, and this is just the first step in the Jack Smith, or in the, in the Duke Watkins. Now, we applied for four projects, uh, we got one of them funded, but that's, that's okay, because we, we resubmitted the other three the next round, and we're gonna keep submitting. Uh, you'll notice down at K Street that we restripped that.
Nice.
That made a big difference.
Extend the turn line for a whole block, which allows cars to get out of the way, so they, the, through the river road works better. And we worked the timing on that signal to give a longer pass-through time for those going straight and those going, uh, turning left to go to the bridge. And we are getting closer, Patrick will be, uh, holding some, uh, meetings with you. Uh, the general plan is, we, we think we've addressed the downtown area, which came up earlier, uh, in a community meeting, the consensus was to identify four. for the community, which is basically the community college to the county bank building from front, including El Garcis to Third. And that's where we would focus our public places, such things as an arch.
Olive is there.
Yeah. And we would look at trying to focus that as a, lack of better term, Saturday night. But I think is what you were trying to, a bit ago. So that was a very productive meeting that we held. But it's moving forward, the, the transportation study is, is very near completion. We're doing a speed study, which we're looking at all, every ten years, you have to review the speed limits in town. That study got kicked off last night. We're looking at traffic safety data to identify where accidents appear over the last ten years.
Basically drive about seventy through town now, right?
Forty-five at best. But, you know, and it quantified what we already knew, and that is K, River Road, Needles Highway, fourteen thousand cars day. So.
Going from Havasu to Bullhead.
Yeah, well, and what we have also is the, the bridge over into Arizona, right there. They're going, they, the bits came in, they had one, and it was fifty percent the cost above. So they redid it, and we'll find out soon what that cost is. But their current projection is, I believe, to start in October for that project. But that bridge, we've been assured, will be open, one lane. You know, it'll be shifts of cars, you know, one lane going this way, and then the five people send them the other way. But it's too important. And for the purposes of, oh darn it. For the purposes of run for the wall. I made the decision yesterday that we are going to create a little crack in the barriers that block the use of K Street for the motorcycles go through there. Because when they come into town, they're smart enough. Yeah, they're smart enough to know the gas is a dollar, dollar, I have to keep it possible. Somebody help us with that. So, to avoid a larger traffic problem, we're just going to do it. And, but we have, is the most necessary thing. Patrick and I have every, I know, me, I can't speak to Patrick. He talks to BNSF every Monday morning.
Good luck.
All we need is a right-of-way permit.
I know.
To construct the barriers that they insist that we build.
Have we drafted it for them?
Yeah, they, they sent it to us, we marked it up, sent it back. They didn't like it. We, but the agreement's all there.
Delay, delay, delay.
It's, but it's.
They didn't like it, so did we redraft it?
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're, you know, if they, if they don't want to do the work, that could hang up.
But dealing with BNSF, first of all, they remind us all the time, we were here first. Oh, the Red Rose. And that we work on their. And out of all the things we're dealing with, I'm sure Needles is number one. But we weekly push. The mayor has now offered to go to Fort Worth to where their central office is. Good luck to you. I know, I know. I'll cut, I'll call. But, but we, we, we work on that every day. Last thing I want to report is, Patrick and I met with the grocery.
That was on my brain.
Yeah, met with the grocery. By all accounts, his earlier statement in December seemed to be true that, that he'll be open between Halloween and Christmas. But California has a terrible business reputation. Being anti-business. He doesn't have any stores in California. We met with him last weekend because his biggest concern was, I don't want to get caught in the quicksand of California credit. I reminded him that we've already issued you the only land use permit that you need. You don't, you don't have to comply with CECL. You already have the permit to demonstrate.
Was he afraid?
Huh? Well, of, of the unknown, like the state widget inspector coming in saying, where's your widget permit? Well, I don't have, well, okay, I'm going to cite you for not having your widget permit. Now, we experienced that up here at the slide, it's up at the Aquatic Center. Had it there for twenty years. All of a sudden, an amusement ride inspector for the state stayed at a hotel nearby, saw, classified it as an amusement ride. And now we have to get an annual permit from the state for that. Well, that, you know, that, that drives business people nuts, the unknown. So I continue to be full of optimism. He, he mentioned that he believed the store will be successful. It's just, he's, he's, and I have talked with the new county supervisors. She said he will need fire marshal approval, but the sprinklers are already there.
Yeah, it's pretty updated, right.
They will need a food handlers permit. But the supervisor said, I will personally handhold that permit to the county. So it is, it is just hoping this fellow cross that his three-and-a-half-million-dollar investment is a good investment.
We'll have a sweet shop opening.
Yeah, there's a sandwich shop, going to open down on where the donut shop was.
Well, there is a, there is a, that's what's going to be, a sweet shop and be sweet shop. It's Danny Williams. But that's what it was before, was the sweet shop, donuts.
Right.
So we can live on the donuts until he gets the grocery center.
So all the indications are good. Expect to see on the ballot this November, although council has made final decision that we shift from the gross receipts tax from Maryland to a square foot tax. I can teach monkey to collect taxes. So it is square foot times X as opposed to, how much did you grow? Who did you sell it to, at what price? There's too many moving pieces in that equation. And I, I'm not comfortable reporting that we're getting all we're entitled to.
I think Hazel would always want to do that.
Do you think, yeah, I'm sure you thought this out, and there's been all kinds of equations. How do you think we'll do? Do you think we'll be better? Close to the same, we can't do worse?
The direction of the council, to me, was this cannot be less than.
Okay, that's good to hear.
But there's bills in the legislature to prohibit cities from charging taxes. And I got to tell you, those, I'm for the money, I don't know. I can't, I shouldn't.
They can't do that.
Well, they, they could.
They can do whatever they want, they're the government.
They seem to find a way.
Nobody's house or life is safe by the legislature, it's a sad reason that you would say.
And they're always looking for money.
And then the other is, you're likely to see a valid measure that applies the hotel tax to short-term rooms. Because houses are being, well, there's a team through here, council adopted that, what you recommended to them. And then we would simply apply the hotel tax, which is ten percent here. I guess it came from where it was. Where I paid like eighteen percent. And it's visitors, these aren't. And.
Well, it's just passed on with the rent.
Of course, we don't, we don't. And so you're likely to see those two measures in addition to councils. Yeah, that's all I have, Madam Chair, I'm sorry to be so late.
I just have an announcement that since there are no agenda items for next week's scheduled planning commission meeting, our next planning commission meeting, June eighth.
I was going to ask about that because we have tonight's. And so, yeah, I wouldn't think that there was anything for next week's.
I'll put a notice of adjournment.
Yeah, and send, yeah, that'd be great. Okay, ask for a motion.
First Wednesday of the month.
Ask for a motion to adjourn.
Well, it couldn't be the end.
Thank you, we're done.
I guess it's on June first, my gosh, that's almost here.
Yeah, because the, yeah, it would be the first.
The election is June.
Thank you.